It's Friday. It's okay, it's okay.
Alright guys. We've moved it several times. Alright girls, you're good.
Okay, what is your favorite, why don't, how about this, since we didn't let you introduce yourself, why don't you tell us your name and your grade? And then tell us what was something you learned about the moon? Or your favorite part about robotics, either one.
My name is Faith. My name is Faith and I'm in 3rd grade. In my class, I learned different names of creatures and how you can get air and water and energy from on the moon.
Katie, did you want to introduce yourself?
Hi.
Good for you. Cooperating.
I'm just like, we, um, we, we would call that, call the moon. And, um, the banana is probably, we look at it as a tree. We look at one and, and, and I'm going to work, because I need to meet people.
My name is Maddie and I'm in 3rd grade. My favorite part is...
Zero. Alright. So did you basically want to tell everybody a little bit about the P Coaters and what your world was like?
Um, the world's experience was pretty amazing. It kind of happened very quickly. We didn't see it coming. But all, there's 60 teams there from all over the world. And how it works is they get to vote for their favorite. So they get to go talk to everybody and they have to pick the team that has the best core values, which are, do you guys know the core values? Yes? Discovery? Innovation?
Fun.
Fun, yes. Inclusion? Teamwork. So the 60 teams, they voted and they brought it down to a top three, which was 13. A team from Costa Rica and a team from Canada. So then they voted again and they won the Team Choice Award. So that's got them to Ford Field and they got to walk out on Ford Field in front of all kinds of people. And then they got this big banner. Wow.
29th, yeah, me. And then we're going to do an assembly for the team on May 29th at Elementary School in front of all their peers to celebrate with them. Very proud of them, nice job ladies and gentlemen.
Good job.
Thank you for that. You went to the student reports. You were both there, Rebecca.
Hi. Uh, I'm Becca. I'm a co-president for Student Council along with Caleb, she's at a soccer game in Brown City. Um, this school year's homecoming, we had, the theme was game night and each grade had their own video game. Like the seniors were Mario Brothers and so on. And then, um, we had an event where it was bubble soccer. We played on the football field and those were really, really fun and all the kids love it every year. And then we also had a dance on that Saturday for homecoming. And then we had a holiday week during the winter where we had winter dress up days and a pep rally to do the winter sports and, uh, snow coming dance. Our Student Council went to a Frankenmove conference, um, in the Bavarian Inn. Fifteen of us went and we got to meet other groups of Student Council members where other schools came and shared their ideas and we shared our ideas as well. Um, and then we had a senior spirit week for our last days, or last weeks, or last, uh, last week of school. And it was really fun and all of us got to do one last dress up altogether. In the future, we're about to do student elections for upcoming, um, Student Council members and, um, yep. And then we're having an outdoor movie June 7th at 9:00 PM on the football field. It's $5 and we're going to be playing Tamanji on a big screen. It's super fun. And then next year's homecoming is going to be September 23rd through 28th. Not sure what the theme is going to be yet, we were going to see. And then you guys can follow us on Twitter @MemphisPico.
I'm going to report to the youth service director.
Hello. So I want to start out with letting you acknowledge that, um, we see you in transition. And after 25 years of service and your dedication to services, um, she has and continues to always have a time for the state of the children. And she really likes to be here, so. So if you see her, congratulate her. 25 years is a long time.
Who is this certificate from?
Uh, it was from the Michigan Department of Education and the School Nutrition Association of Michigan. They joined together in recognizing the school for, um, for service. Um, but I was wearing that today. Um, right now we're looking towards closing up the school year. Uh, we're looking to open it in quickly. So collectively, um, lunch accounts is always a challenge, but, but good, they're, we're doing good. We're, we're getting there. Um, we are off, so I gave over some numbers and I looked at April and then September of this year. And if you have some, um, so in September, we started out at the elementary with 380 breakfasts and 2,291 lunches for that month. And in April, we ended with 1,145 breakfasts and 3,539 lunches, which is an increase of 765 breakfasts and 1,248 lunches. Um, which the year before in 2017, 18 school year, um, there's a 365 difference, which we increased our, in break, our, um, breakfast totals and then 487 in lunches. So that's a big jump in a year. I mean, it's about the same amount of kids. And junior senior high, we went from 8:38 for breakfast in September, 3,639 lunches, to in April, 1,152 breakfasts and 4,414 lunches, which again, um, 314 for breakfast increased and 775 for lunch. Uh, previous year, we had 144, um, between the two months, an increase in breakfast and we had a loss of 337 in lunches. So that's a big, big increase for us. Um, I think I contributed to trying some new menu items, um, getting more input from the kids and, um, just listening to what they want. And more items available also as the time goes on. Um, so basically, we had good break lizard dust today, so that was good. Um, we had a lot of fun, we were very well behaved, too. Thank you. Um, we had eight great breakfasts on the last day's school, but for ritual, we did senior breakfast. That was a lot of fun. It's always nice to see them one last time as they go through the line and not to drop them. Um, and then, I don't know if anybody here probably don't need to order, but my last order is next Thursday. So if your groups are, um, I sent them an email, but if they need to order for field day or anything like that, that will be next Thursday by noon. And then after that, we'll be inventorying, winding down and enjoying the summer. So is there any questions? No, but congratulations. Well, thank you so much. You guys have a very nice day.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Laura and her staff have done a great job. Yeah, it's also an increasing amount of work.
I was going to say, it's my kids.
We'll talk about that. And she does work hard to, uh, just watching the care so generously. After $30, $40, we don't like to charge anymore, but Laura is not going to turn anybody down. And unfortunately, with that sometimes we get a higher cap. So we're working together, she's in contact with the family a lot, trying to come up with a plan, trying to make it work. She has had donations in the past from community members that'll help pay for that, so that's something we have. But her and her staff have done outstanding jobs, we'll see it in the morning. Thanks, Laura.
Great. Thanks.
First thing to welcome, Mr. Bobsey and Mr. Walsh, are you doing, alumnus and coaches and athletes from Memphis. So welcome. Congratulations. Um, first thing, um, last month, we, uh, you know, we're going to get out the athletes appreciation. I thought it was appreciation award for people that, you know, achieved, you know, we have so many people doing great things. But one gentleman couldn't make it here and he saved us just before the first baseball game came out on his own time and, um, again, I had nominated last month, but he was able to make it. But I'd like to have Mr. Robert Williamson, if you could come up. Mr. Williamson showed up and worked on our scoreboard for about four or five hours and, and at the end of the day, we're very grateful we were able to get it going. It's been working ever since. So I screwed it up, but thanks for picking it up. We also have, um, some special guests here today. These are from, excuse me, from the elementary school. And, uh, these three students wrestled. I know I'm going to screw it up. If you can help me out, was it 8, was it 8th grade, right? 8th through 10U.
For the New Way National.
For the New Way National, that's what I was stumped on. These three girls came and competed against boys, girls, everything. And very proud to say, just, uh, Helen Wonkey came in 8th place. Yep. Pinned a couple of boys. And congratulations. And that's one of Miss Camille Fitzpatrick. We know who you are and she, uh, she wrestled as well. She did a great job and she came in 4th place. And last but not least, Gabrielle Wonkey also.
Grace.
Grace. Gracie. Gracilia.
Grace. Grace.
Well, I'll miss you soon.
Thanks.
That's started up today. Each one of them became 3rd place. So congratulations.
These girls are awesome.
So, uh, the top wrestling, uh, wrestling teams got, uh, got a bright future today. We also have, uh, graduation yesterday. Just wanted to go through a list of some of the different scholarships that we gave out. We had the Memphis Eleven Booster Scholarship, this Ron Brackey had given that one out. And we had several winners that won that one. Ben Blanco, Grace Cook, Eric Keeler, Rebecca Keeler, Noah Trudeau and Dawson Spears. So they all won the Memphis Eleven Booster Scholarship Award. We had our Jean LaFaye Scholarship, I'm sure close to you. Uh, Coach LaFaye was a coach here 39 years ago since he's walked the sidelines. He started a football scholarship for athletes every single year. This year, Coach Conno, uh, we, of course, he's no longer with us. Coach Conno, Coach, uh, Mr. Breengard and Steve Przyzki all decided and Kaden Shiver's won that award. So we're real proud of Kaden, he had a great senior year as our quarterback. We had the United States Marine Corps Serious Athlete Award and Rebecca Keeler won that one as well. So her dad will be having to make quite a few plaques in that outfit. Quite a few awards. And then we had the Greater Thom Scholar Athletes National, we have to have a 3.2 GPA during the year. And this was just for the fall and for the winter sports, because spring sports is still going on. We had 18 seniors win that award. So we were very well represented with that. Congratulations and we're going to miss all those seniors. Couple other things, we, um, we had, uh, the last time we met, we had an, uh, Athletic Alert this night. I think it was right after the last board meeting. We had it here. Um, just wanted to get something out, you know, there's a lot of questions out there in the community about you developing youth sports and where we're heading, you know, the direction of the high school sports. We had several, 70 people show up, all our high school coaches showed up. So we were very well represented. It was just sort of a question and answer evening, went about 30 or 45 minutes to an hour. And I think a lot of people left here, a lot were comfortable where we're going, the direction that we're in. It seemed to go really well. We, uh, a couple of things I am proud of, I made copies for you. We had, you know, one of the things about athletics is sportsmanship and what we're, coaches, we're trying to do as administrators, down to our coaches, uh, to represent our school in a proper sportsmanship, sportsmanship way. And we had some really interesting letters sent to us, not only from the league official who gives us all our officials. We also had one just about a week ago from an official that, um, I mean, he would do anything. We had a game where we had a varsity game here and, uh, Jose King, we were playing, took the officials in St. Clair Shores. This gentleman drove all the way from Harlem. Instead of coming here right across 69, we were able to split them up, have them go down and cover so our JV could play. We were trying to get JV games. And, um, I'll just read a couple of things. Uh, this is from the head official who gives us all officials. He said, "I want to thank, thank Memphis for all they did towards the tri-county east officials this season." As he had expressed many times, the sportsmanship of athletes was excellent at Memphis, but also the improvement of the parent's sportsmanship is very noticeable, which we're very proud of. "I believe that this is a reflection of the entire administration and leadership of the entire coaching staff." From the official side, Memphis High School has become a school that the officials desire to go to. This is important for an assignee because officials can block sites at schools that they do not want to work for. I was although able to upgrade the extra quality of officials based on the fact that officials enjoyed working at Memphis High School. This is in large part due to the effort that Memphis has made to stress sportsmanship with student athletes and parents. The league greatly appreciates the hard work of the entire Memphis, uh, high school for its staff." So, uh, that's something to be very proud of. And we also had another one from, um, from an official who highly recognizes one of the better officials. He gets some of the biggest varsity games and he chooses to come here. And he's the one that drove down to the opposing site last week. Did two games by himself. So, um, just a couple of letters, if anybody ever says, "Well, you know, we need to work on it, we can always get better." But our student athletes, our parents, our coaches, the whole administrative staff did a great job. So we should all, you know, big applause for everybody. As mentioned earlier, we do have, we do have varsity football coach, Mr. Bremer, not able to make it here tonight. He's going to do his best to try to make it at the next board meeting. Uh, Mr. Bremer has great experience. He has over 23 years of coaching experience. We, uh, met with him several times over the months. We tried to get somebody who we thought would be the best, best interest for our kids. He's proven that at the other schools that he's coached at. Uh, he didn't waste much time. I think within the first week, he had two after-school meetings. He had over 44 kids sign up the very first day, um, which we're very excited about, just for the high school team. He's held, um, morning practices, not practices, weightlifting at 7:00 in the morning with over 20 kids showing up for that. Um, in connection with some of the stuff that we're doing in the evening, we're averaging about 17 to 20 kids there. So big jump, big jump from where we were in the past. But Mr. Bremer brings a lot of knowledge, a lot of experience to our program. We're very lucky to have him. Um, as you mentioned, Race Jacobs will be our, one of our JD coaches. Race played for Coach Bremer and he also coached with him. So they're closely tied. We have several meetings this week with several other coaches. We're trying to tie, tidy up the entire staff. I think the commitments we'll get this week will do just that. And it's coaches that we want, not that we have to just take. And it's been a good, it's been a great experience because these are people that want to come to the program. That's, you know, they can call their own and develop it and, you know, and the kids are excited, they're buying into it. Kids that didn't play football last year signed up and showed up to weigh in from 7:00 in the morning. I guess if you had a better choice, but they showed up, so. Uh, great excitement there. Uh, just a couple of other things with football. Before I got here, I know Mr. Bremer had set up a co-op with Austin and, uh, hopefully to get some of their kids to come play football. We haven't had real much success with that, but we're going there next week to meet, uh, meet with the school. They have a new A D and to let those kids know they can come play here, they'll still attend Austin, they can come play at our school. And we're hoping we get, you know, a few kids. I can tell you a couple of fielders out there, there are several kids that potentially are interested in coming up there to practice. So we hope, we hope that they will, you know, help, you know, solidify our program. Another thing I did is just a couple, I just, I did something up to the new board. We did a new, uh, put together a new evaluation for our coaches that'll take place next year, because I want to continue. Just to give you an idea of the evaluation process of our coaches. Our head coaches evaluate the coaches below them. I evaluate the head coach as well as, uh, we expect them to do a self-evaluation as well. And we kind of go, and to be honest with you, sometimes the coaches are harder on themselves than I am, so. But it gives us some good eyesight. Also, it's developing records, um, that we can, you know, keep. I know it helps your book with scores and stuff like that and who won this award, who won that award. So just something you can look at in your spare time. Not a lot of changes over the year, just a couple of things. Now into, uh, now into the sports. Our, our track team is performing very well. As you know, all our games are, meets are away, but we've had some fantastic finishes. I know at Brown City last weekend, uh, we finished in the top seven and that's for a whole regional. So we definitely had a strong showing. Trevor Nett, I seen him, a alumnus. Keeps breaking his record every, every week, every week he had a new record. Every week he had a new long jump. Congratulations, he handles to do the long jump kick as he's, and thank you, Mr. Christie was out there digging it up in, in November. Uh, he keeps winning the awards, so he's jumping further and further. Um, but they actually are at Dakota this, this Thursday for county meet and then hopefully we'll have some kids move on from that to the state. Our soccer team, I seen them just pull a little while ago. Uh, the ball went well, they beat Brown City tonight. Um, we're pretty much assured, are tied for first place. That's the worst of the two-game lead with two games to go on Marlet. We actually play Marlet tomorrow here in a makeup, so if they're able to make it. If they do win that, it'll be the first back-to-back and according to Coach Mr. Brody, quite a long time. So it'll be a great achievement for the girls. The boys, of course, did that this year, so I guess he just wins championships. Uh, but it was, and it's also parent night for soccer tomorrow. Uh, and then Thursday, it's districts and actually New Light Christian has districts. And our first meet, our first match was supposed to be at Merritt and we were able to talk them to have it here. Little nicer venue, they were, so they're actually going to be the whole team for the game. But Thursday at 5:30 will be our first district game of soccer. If by chance we are, we don't beat Marlet tomorrow, um, if you tie or win, it's over. But if we, we're to lose tomorrow left, we would have to do a makeup with Dryden at the district. So we're open for a lot of reasons, because I think we can make a strong showing in the districts for our soccer team. If we win Thursday in districts, we'll play home Tuesday. Of course, we won't know that until, you know, all the other teams play off. Softball, they're having a good year. If you had a chance to see them, they have an exciting team. Coach has got them ready to go. JV's working hard, Coach Logan's doing a good job down there. They come this close, but you know what? They're, they're in the games and, uh, they, plenty of things, they showed a strong character because sometimes they struggle coming out of the gate, but then the second game, they're, they're winning, they're winning those games or competing in the team. So they've done a fantastic job in their non-league season and doing a great job in the league season. Their first district game is the 31st at Hope and Christian against Helmont. And if you don't know anything about soccer, softball and baseball, it's all in one day. Weather permitting, so they win that first game, they'll play the championship game after. Their first game is the 31st on Friday at Hope and Christian. Baseball to follow in, um, they're in second place. Unfortunately, they're three games back right now, it was only this last week. But Marlet had some tough games, that's where we're behind. We have our home game tomorrow. Actually, it's parent night as well for, for softball. We started it last year, they do a parent night, senior night for softball and then also for baseball. And, uh, I think Mary Bassler, the flowers, and does a great job and, and coaches, I think, enjoyed it last year in the parents. So, uh, it's kind of, and then the boys' baseball finished their regular season next week. Um, and then they play the first at Northwest, who's in Northwest, also in the Rochester area. And they play Helmont as well at 1:30 on the 3rd. So baseball, softball, track, soccer, all finishing up the next week or two. Thank you to Susan, you and your staff. We had the 5th and 6th grade, I'm sorry, 2nd to 5th grade tournament last, turn, last year, turn. But, uh, basketball camp, 25 participants, they all got t-shirts. And, uh, they really seemed to join. Susan and her staff helped coordinate it all and the kids showed up, they're all organized. Thank you for that. And, uh, it was, it was a good experience. We did it for five days, Mark Carlson was there. More importantly, we had four or five kids showing up every day helping out kids from varsity programs. So, and I think they learned a lot teaching the kids. So it went really well. Um, I'm looking at 6th, on, uh, 13th of June, having the spring sports banquet. We're all honoring the kids that won, you know, all our spring sport awards. I intend, I'm sure we have a ton of the last award winners, both for the, they had some all-league winners and stuff like that. Um, also, to go back to the winter season, we did have, uh, some athletes who were, uh, nominated for the second team. An honorable mention from, and I think we went over that, but, uh, the last board meeting, but we have one gentleman who, um, has just been picked. We're, Memphis is a unique situation. We got, he got picked from the St. Clair County All-Star team. He also got picked for the, for the Macomb County All-Star team and that's Trevor Nett. So he'll play, uh, Trevor Nett was awarded that for both cities or both counties. He'll play at SC4 on the 13th and Macomb on the 20th. So should be excited. You know, he's, first thing he's been, typical Trevor, but why don't my teammates go instead? Share, I don't know, you're a bet, so. Uh, but he's pretty exciting, it's a great award for them. Ben Blanco, our baseball player, three sport, actually four sport athlete, played soccer this year, did very well. Booked basketball, now baseball. Was awarded a scholarship, he signed a letter of intent the other day, actually yesterday in the league. in the league. And we'll have a little signature signing date for him as well here. So Ben Blanco will be attending SC Four next year and that's a baseball scholarship. So, we're hoping the same thing. Trevor and right now the Trevor Nimm, Bryce Wall and, uh, that's Dawson Steer are all being looked at at SC Four in Macomb. So, we're hoping we get a couple of those kids to represent us in college ranks. Other than that, if you had a chance, I want to thank Eric Snyder, our mayor, as well as P.P.W., our science hall came in and they were able to get them up, our All-Star, our state championship banner. So we're well represented at M-nineteen and I think we've had some great excitement out of that. People have said some really nice things, but it's good to get them up, class of ninety-five with, they had Churchill, class of state championship, of course, last year our vasting. And, uh, thank you to, again, Mr. Christie was here the other day and we were able to get banners up representing the state championship as well as our other two non-MSSA sports that still represent us, equestrian and, um, trap. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Principals.
I, uh, I'll start off really quick and I, uh, and I'm gonna make it as brief as my senior farewell, uh, mentioning, speaking. Graduation, uh, as I kind of mentioned, was a success. Our seniors' last day was last Friday. Um, just had an update on our senior progress. Um, we had three students that were shy of twenty-two credits to graduate. Uh, they were within a half-credit pill and they were able to walk. And, um, they, uh, one of, excuse me, two of the three were able to. Uh, one of them will be finishing up probably tomorrow and then one maybe in about a week or so. So, uh, it all looks pretty good for our, our graduation rate this year as opposed to last year. I think a lot of it goes to our staff and our council department, who used to have top three students this year. Did a great job and we're, again, we've already identified students for next year, our junior style, they're going to be seniors, so we know who's, who's in for what bowl starting this year out. Um, uh, eighth grade visited SC Four last week, Thursday. It was a chance for our eighth graders to kind of get, start to get a feel of what does it look like at college and what do things look like at high school. Um, so they very much enjoyed that. There was four teachers that up with them and they had a really good time. Couple of other things that, that, that passed since our last meeting, uh, PBIS Tiger game trip, uh, was pretty fun. Um, I don't think who, uh, yes, or Safari, yes, yes, you were up there, yeah. It was fun. I mean, it was a little washed out for a little while, but we had a fun game and we got all of these bags too, so, um, Tiger did lose. It seems to be calm these days. Uh, another PBIS, uh, event coming up this Friday is movie day. It's going to be, uh, six, seven dollars for the, six, seven dollars for the sixth through eighth grade. Uh, there's some before movie choices plus, uh, game runs as well. Not, not video game or movies, case for not percent of movies. Um, Mrs. Keller is teacher of the year from Memphis. Uh, we kind of taught on her turf and she's, she's gone. Tomorrow, our new MSU advisor, Claire Malinski, visits. She is taking on the role that Meredith Bob had this year, this current year. Claire will be here. Uh, we have, we believe we're going to have her for two years, that's exciting. Uh, she'll be here tomorrow in the morning, look around, get familiar with the school. She's going to go have, um, lunch. Meredith said she's going to show her around town. I think she's going to be pretty fun. She's going to go have some lunch over there at Mom's, I think, and, uh, and, uh, that should be fun to see her tomorrow. Be her first visit, she's been a few times. Fifth grade visiting Memphis today, Susan sent her crew over, uh, and it was a, a good group. Uh, we had, put three groups, Miss Gadd, Davis, and I myself, walked around the school a little bit, we ate some lunch and we sent them back just in the mid-afternoon. It was, it was a good, a good event for all. Kids were really well behaved. Um, I think I, I took my group through the halls during pass time and I think it really, I don't know if I freaked them out, but they were, they were two by two, you know, joined by their hands, hanging up their, uh, it was fun though, they, to see them experience that much, they're excited to come next year. Um, a couple of other things, eighth grade dance on six-twelve and the eighth grade promotion breakfast, um, is on six-thirteen, so the last two days of school. Exams will be that last week, eleven to fifteen, they're all half-days. Um, M-Step and N.W.E.A. going simultaneously at this, at this point. Um, I'll kind of testing it, kids' eyes are about to roll back in their heads. Um, and then the last thing I want to say is, I shared this with Mr. Goodme last month, I don't know if I can report it to the board, but career cruising is a program we use, uh, seven through twelve. All students kind of map out the careers, you know, from South Grandy on, kind of like how they, what they want, maybe they're interesting, like there's something solid stone and they kind of, you know, do interest along the way. Um, we were able to get a hundred percent completion from the building. Um, so Meredith Bob worked really hard on that, Miss Gadd, she, she, Corbett, uh, did a really good job and so, pretty excited about it, pretty proud of them doing that too, so just wanted to share it.
Yeah, I think that's the first time we've ever had a hundred percent complete, so great job.
That's wonderful.
All right, um, there's lots of things going on at the elementary, it's a very, very busy time. Field trips, I feel like every day we need somebody out. Fifth graders are getting ready to go to camp. Um, they leave the day after Memorial Day. We have our speech conferences on April twenty-fifth and those are by education and ninety-seven percent of the parents that were invited attended. Um, and the talent show, which is a lot of fun, we're twenty acts over right after our last meeting. Um, our school improvement team met, uh, last week to continue to work on implementing that wingtime for next year. There's some scheduling things that we're struggling with a little bit, but we'll continue to meet, um, before the end of school year and into the summer to get that ready for kickoff next year. A representative from the Y.M.C.A. came and they, we received a thousand-dollar grant for walks for summer group. So kids earn a walking ticket for every lap they do around the walking track at recess or any time during the day and every six laps earns them a free book to take home and go with the summer. So, um, Mrs. Coon went to the Scholastic warehouse and spent lots of money on books and she had a very good time where she was there. Um, we already talked about the B-coders. Uh, we'll be doing another, um, round of instructional rounds on May twenty-ninth. And then, um, there's just some other updates in there. We're done with M-Step testing, N.W.E.A. is kicking off and, um, everything went really well with M-Step testing. On May twenty-fourth, we have a group of parents coming in, um, because we were given another grant, the extended, um, time learning grant for the early literacy initiative that we've been spending a while talking about. So, um, I've been talking a lot with our representatives at RISA and how can we really make a beneficial summer learning program for students. Um, all the research coming back shows that summer school isn't really working that great with kindergarten through third grade students. So, um, this grant that we received is really targeted at them and we've decided to use it to make an at-home summer reading program. So, on April, or May twenty-fourth, um, the students that were selected to participate in this are students that are at risk for retention based on the new third grade reading legislation. And I passed out that Student Success Book, this was last year's copy. Um, so maybe like the old one, but the new one is the same, the only difference is that with all the, um, activities, there is a Q.R. code so that parents can scan it and kind of learn how to do some of these activities on their own. Um, so this book is broken up into all the different areas of literacy that are foundational and these are the skills that we're finding that our early out students are kind of lacking in and that are struggling. So, um, we purchased materials to do most of the activities in this book. It seems overwhelming, doesn't it? So we're going to bring all the parents in and they're going to get this bed pack, which we're seeing now isn't going to hold up, but it's full, so we're going to have to buy new bed packs. And it's got reading material in there at the students' level. It has areas that they are struggling in, that they can complete the activities from here and we're going to bring the parents in and teach them how to work with their picks. So then, over the summer, we're going to have meetups every other week or weekly where we meet maybe at the park or at the Artic Queen or somewhere where we can kind of talk, um, check in, see how it's going. We have teachers that will be checking in with their students as well and sending them postcards and we'll kind of monitor their progress on the way, um, throughout the summer. We are using their end-of-the-year data from testing and the beginning-of-the-year data to monitor effectiveness of the program. And we are able to do this with sixty students. We have twenty-five kindergartners, twenty-five first graders and ten second graders that will, and we pick it that way just based on the data of where the students are struggling the most and how we can provide the most support. So, each kit has things in it that are geared toward that students at their reading level, um, at their areas of deficit and we're hoping to see a lot of gain for our bucks, but that's we've been working really hard on it. So, this is here if you want to look at it. Or there's a whole room special stuff that we're happy to see you come see it, but we're very excited about that.
Will the parents committed to coming to the meeting?
Yep, so, um, we have, it's, they have until next, uh, or this Friday to respond and we've already got half the people saying, saying yes, absolutely, they'd love this. And we've had a struggle in the past getting kids to commit to summer school because it's just such a commitment during the summer. So I think they like, they can kind of work at their own pace throughout the summer. So, um, happy that parents have said yes, absolutely, uh, we're just waiting to hear from the other. We'll be calling them this week if you want. Any questions about that? Oh, and if you're not going to use this book or don't want to, I can give you that.
All right. Your meeting business director, Mr. Walsh.
Well, thank you. Unfortunately, I'm only four days in to.
Can you make it as long as race?
Um, I just want to take the time to, to say thank you for the opportunity, um, at this position. I'm very excited for it. Uh, while it's only been four days, I feel like, uh, I, I got to spend a lot of time with Sandy Fowler. She was able to give me a command to kind of some of the processes and procedures, um, that we follow, uh, in, there in central office. And, um, Anne Orlando from RISA was able to come in and took an afternoon with me to help show me around the Business Plus system. Um, so I'm, I'm really excited to, to continue to learn and grow and become a real nice asset for the district.
Welcome.
I'm looking forward to having more to say than just me.
And that's a good point. Adam and I will be spending a lot of time together as we get to, uh, June, as we're going to adopt our final year-end budget and also our projected for next year. So that's another mountain on the desk of Adam's, the thirty different piles that he's digging through right now. Uh, he's also going to be looking into the MSDIL certifications, the business officials of Michigan where they actually do, of course, I think it takes about a year and a half, two years, a lot of online, a lot of meetings, but it's a good resource for him to meet people and do a lot of the training. So we'll be sending him to that over the next year or so as we move forward. So, excited to see him in there. It's a, it's a comfort for us not to.
Well, I just, I'll report on the policy agreements committee, uh, met before our, um, May sixth meeting. Uh, we had a few things on the agenda, so I did put them on here, sort of top of the agenda, and then there's some recommendations, uh, things we talked about, it's some board workshop stuff that kind of carried on, we did the, uh, some of the communication process, how we want to do that. We gave up some recommendations in the different areas. So you'll see on the agenda what we were talking about and then a recommendation. So, as we move forward, I know that we'll have to have some more meetings on it, but here's kind of where the policy is at. We're not looking to make policy, we're just kind of talking about some procedures that we thought we could follow to help everything run smoothly. Um, it does go on to the back and we did get cut short, so there's one policy that we just had to table, we did not, did not get a chance to talk about, so, um, the other things there. And if you look at the back real quick, you'll see that we had, um, the policy eighty-one sixty is the, uh, audience participation. So we're in a real weird spot because that's one of the policies that we have looked at with Neola, but it's also one of the revising because we didn't like the wording in the current one. So tonight you'll see in the agenda that we are going to adopt the eighty-one sixty, which is our old policy, second readings, and it just changed in that the administration or the board would make that contact, um, based on audience participation. But then you'll also see the first reading of the Neola policy. So, we were moving to Neola policy, but we had to have something in place until we had those two readings of the Neola policy, so we weren't left without anything. So I know it looks weird that we are changing one policy and adopting it and then adopting brand new one in two months. So, I just kind of wonder, show you why that was going on, so we have everything covered there.
Anyone have any questions around that? All right. Move on to audience participation.
And Mr. Eric Goodstetter.
Yeah, um, here at my company, I think you're all going back again next year. Uh, I know there's contracts, talk, there's something about it at that point, but sure, I wish it was there that he is present here. I think he's more in reference now, um, in his secondary and, uh, I think he could do it alone. Uh, Mr. Corbett too was pretty well invested in wrestling. He came and showed up, so I, I just wanted to mention that too. But Mr. Oki, he's here, he's for these kids and I think he needs to be here more. Thank you.
Chris Stetzer.
I'd like to thank, uh, the board and the school and Mr. Oki for giving us the opportunity to help out with all the athletic programs this year. I was a part of football, basketball, wrestling and everything like that and I don't think it would have been possible without Mr. Oki. So I'd like to thank him for having the support of our family to contribute to this community. So, thank you.
Jeff Christie.
I didn't know we were going to congratulate Mr. Oki, but I want to chime in. He's, he's really put a lot forward, paid for. So, I mean, I don't, you can't say enough about Mr. Oki. I mean, I don't think anybody here can say anything bad about him. So, thank you. Um, a few things. It's not all good. I come here, I got a lot of pride mixed up. I've been paying my whole life. See a principal, when you go to work, you see the boss bend down to pick up trash. Kind of inspires you, right? This is the boss, he's picking up the trash, he's going to blow up the bubble out of his car, kind of want to follow suit, makes you, makes you proud too, right? My principal is sweeping the floor, he's mopping everything down and I tell you what really kind of hit me, you know? He's out there mopping the floors on his time off because he cares about the school. So maybe it inspires me a little bit, you know? By stepping up. Come here and build a long jump pit or make a hang some banners, whatever, you know? But, so I want to tell you thank you, you know? Appreciate it because it's going to spread. It better spread. You know, that's, that's the good side. And I get the flip side. How many of you have had a drink, had a drink found in this school, ever? How many of you could have a drink, have a drink found in this school if you wanted to? You can. Why? Because for eighty dollars, you can buy a four-pack of filters and thread them on and then you have water for kids in the gymnasium to drink. You know, the basic stuff, right? Let's, let's be good stewards of a building that we've been given to take, to teach kids, right? So go spend eighty bucks and at least get four of them running. If you don't have the money, I'll spot you, I'll give you a hundred. Get six of them running, all right? Can we do that? I'm not, I'm, I'm on accountability because I know, we all know they don't work, right? Does anybody not know they don't work? Every single person here has been here and they know they don't work. So I ain't just barking up a tree, we all know. It's complacency. We're walking past it. We're not doing nothing about it, right? And then one thing gets worse and the next thing and the next thing. So let's stop, let's let the buck stop right here, let's just fix that one thing, all right? Next time you come here, let's have the drinking bottles working. Can anybody commit to this? Because I'll spot by the filters. What's it take? Anybody got a problem with that? Let's get the water bottles first fixed. That's basic stuff. Anyone? All right. Second, you walk, you pull in the driveway and your Dodge or Hovell's digging up, you could like, I don't have to tell you, you've all pulled in the same driveway I did, right? So what's it take? It's thirty-six, pay eighty dollars a ton for some cold patch. So let's take a guy out there and let's dump some crap in the holes and pack it down. It's not that complicated. You see people that are, don't even finish high school, walk by the dump truck, do it every day, driving the walk down road. the road. All right, so we got somebody here to figure that out. Let's dump some crap in some holes and have a little pride in our school. Anybody against having a little pride for our school? All right. Third, every day I come here after, right about November to December, Susan Frost hits the front doors and the school's scraped. Why? It's not your fault. They shot the grades wrong. The school's too low. I get it. You got a drain there. It's two inches above the dirt. So what are you going to get this winter? You're going to get the same crap you got the last winter. That's why you had butt worn in the concrete because the drain pushes up. It's a shitty fix, I know, but you got to stay up on it. You got a Band-Aid fix, you got to stay on the Band-Aid. You keep putting Band-Aids on it. So right now, you walk out the door. Everybody, when you walk out, look at the front door. You got a drain sitting this high above the concrete and you got brand new concrete right next to it. I'm going to tell you why you got brand new concrete. Because the drain's too damn high. And you're going to have new concrete next year and the door is going to heave. And you come in here and address a match and you ain't going to be able to get in the building because the door is going to be scraped in the concrete again. And this is the same thing over and over and over. So let's just start there. Let's start three things, right? Let's three things. Let's help the principal keep this place clean to have some respect for ourselves. Be good stewards. Let's fix the holes in the parking lot and get the kids something to drink out of our own drinking fountains. First time in years I'd love to come in here and have a drink of water out of this fountain. Anybody commit? I'm calling out. This is like, we should already did this. I shouldn't have to come here and say, do your damn job. But I am now, so now it's on record and I'm going to hold you accountable. Thank you. I'm going to say it every time, every meeting. For the rest of the time you're all here. This is the first three. I'm going to repeat them next month and add three more to them. So let's, it's going to get out of control. So we'll help you out here. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, correspondence. She's on for an urgent. Um, the three law notes. Just some notes I had pulled from that, that we must designate liaisons for the School Safety Commission and Office of School Safety Liaison. Are you taking care of that? Anything else on the law notes?
There was something about the T-shirt evaluation having to be put on the website.
The tool?
Yeah, the tool for that outfit.
It, I don't know if the full tool or is it mentioned as well? I think that that's it.
It did mention a policy as far as, we've had before for discipline, that people, that they may lose their action of walking during senior, for their graduation. Do we have that in our policy?
It's not in our written policy, but it says, you know, I don't actually know that lays that out, but we have used that as a, I'm sure.
Yeah, made a statement in there. If you're going to have a disqualification, you should have it as specific. Yeah, if somebody's finished all of their high school requirements and forget for some other behavior, we're not allowed to walk.
Can't deny them over the form.
It's been.
No friends.
It's been a long time. All right, we had the article on the Memphis Robotics Team, the championship. Great article.
The band of the girls, Ben? Are we going to hang, do we have that for the school?
Yeah, we're going to hang it after our assembly over there. If they want to be in the gym, they're just picking up their stuff.
So it's twenty-nine at two o'clock. It's M1 light, Channel sixteen as well.
Then we have the article on the school board changes. It's in the voice. About, I do remember.
You want to guess?
Bob Seen. All right, then we're on to old business. Start first with Neola Policy 144.1, compensation adoption.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of Neola Policy 0144.1, compensation as presented.
Okay, we have a motion in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We have Memphis Policy 8160, rules for public participation adoption.
Make a motion to adopt Memphis Policy 8160, rules for public participation as presented.
Motion by Mr. Cook, supported by Mr. Perry. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Communication procedure discussion.
I think I kind of covered this in the other during reports.
All right, we'll move on to business then. This is on the board committees. Mr. Goodman and I, with Mrs. Bob Seen last week, reviewed, to do an orientation of the board, go through the policies. And we had some of the committee spots vacated. And Mrs. Francis resigned. Mrs. Bob Seen agreed to step in on those committees, which would be the DSIT representative and the extracurricular committee. I'll ask Cheryl if she can chair the extracurricular activities since I'm a drop down because she was a most senior member. Okay, next up, we have the 2019-20 proposed recent budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed recent budget for 2019-2020 as presented. Support.
Motion by Mrs. Florka, supported by Mrs. McHugh. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Neola Policy 167.3. This is the first reading for public participation at board meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading, Neola Policy 167.3, public participation at board meetings.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Perry, supported by Mrs. Florka. Any discussion?
The only point I have is under, under H1. The seminar I went to spoke to the second point there in repetitive. It actually gets open meetings. I have to tell somebody they can't say the same thing somebody else said. So five people can say the same thing. Five people can stand up and say, Mr. Corrappa is the greatest principal we ever had. And you can't stop him. So I think repetitive, I would strike repetitive. I think it's up to the chair to preside over the public comment section as given in this policy. But everyone has a right to be heard, even if they're saying the same thing that person reporting said.
Is it E1?
H1.
H1. And it does say the presiding officer may, but I just have a problem with repetitive reading. Everything else is.
Is it brought up at the, brought up at the discussion? Is it the group that resulted in the meeting after you did the patient?
No, this was an attorney that did an open meetings act seminar that I attended via teleconference. And she was very clear, this was a school-related, subject matter of school-related, not related to anything else. And she made a point to say, you can't stop somebody from saying what they want to say. They have a right to speak. So saying it's repetitive, we can't say, I'm sorry, Sally, Joe already said.
Would you recommend that you just leave that in and just take out the repetitive?
Just take out repetitive. Harassing certain issues. And frivolous as well.
So the amendment, they read the presiding officer may prohibit public comments which are harassing.
Frivolous, I believe. That frivolous, I went on somebody standing up and reciting poetry for three minutes just because. I mean.
I'd like to make a motion, I don't think, make a motion of end or just approve the first reading, Neola Policy 0167.3 as amended. Repetitive and frivolous.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Perry, supported by Mr. Cook. The amendment, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have Neola Policy 3100 through 3531. This is the professional staff section. And it's the first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of Neola Policy 3100 through 3531, professional staff as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Florka, supported by Mrs. McConnor. Any discussion?
I was reading the policies and I had a concern about Policy 3122, the nondiscrimination people employment opportunity. And it was under the formal complaint procedure. And from how I'm reading and understanding it, it sounds like the superintendent determined the complainant was subjected to a harmful discrimination retaliation. He should must identify what corrective actions will be taken to stop, remediate or prevent the recurrence of the discrimination retaliation. The corrective action, corrective action should be reasonable, timely, age-appropriate, effective and tailored to the specific situation. Then we have that the decision of the superintendent shall be final. Instead of the respondent or the complainant has a chance to take their complaint to the school board. I feel like using the chain of command, that it shouldn't stop at the superintendent. The final decision shouldn't be there. If we have a chain of command and that Board of Education is above the superintendent, they should have a chance to bring that to the board. They shouldn't stop at the superintendent. That's why we have the chain of command. So I would think that the other option would be more appropriate.
The 3122 starts with the Board of Education doesn't discriminate based on et cetera. So I would tend to agree with Ms. Florka that a complain or respondent should have the ability to appeal as per the guidelines listed here in 3122, within five business days. We have a larger question about this piece as well, when we look at formally and informal complaints. I would like to get an opinion before our next reading of this, of how this relates to Policy 1200. Because this process does not mention that they, they may conflict because this one says that you can verbally file a complaint where this other policy that we have that's outside of Neola says we're supposed to do this with this forum. So I'd like to understand before we adopt this, how those two things conflict or don't conflict.
With the adoption of our new policy, so the way that the policies line up don't always match number to number. So as we adopt, after today, we'll have the zeros to the four thousands. Well, the four thousands are done, so we'll have another reading and the three thousand we done. They recommend that we go through and as we adopt policies, we remove old ones. However, to go through and try to line up, like this one's, you know, the 3122, where ours is 1200, they don't coincide, so it's not an easy thing to do. So the understanding is as you adopt a new policy, that one supersedes any other policies. At the end of all the policies that we've adopted, you go through and then you rescind all of our old ones. We were able to do a few of them. We first did it because we had to get rid of some of the background check ones. So we did rescind a few to make those right away. But other than that, so that's where it would be, is that any new policies adopted would supersede, like you said, instead of the 1200 because they do conflict. We would understand that all new policies would take precedence over those.
So once this policy is adopted, then the 1200 form is no longer.
Correct. We haven't officially rescinded it, but we recognize 3122 as the policy we found. But that's an easy switch. When we go through and sit down with Neola rep, they kind of give us some guidance. And his recommendation was that you take and end it at the superintendent so the board is not constantly hearing things. That was just his recommendation. So there's no reason not to allow it to the board.
Thank you. There was over fifty policies in that section. So I think there was multiples that had an option selected and at the superintendent. So maybe we need to step back and look at those again and see if we want to be consistent with the others.
Now, this is the only one that's available that I've seen. That was why I was reading through them from the three thousands. At least I didn't go back and recall the previous ones, but I was going to the three thousands for this meeting. That's the one I see.
Because there is, in each of the different sections, there's going to be one, like Laura was pointing out, that there's a nondiscrimination one for teachers and there's one for administration. So we would have to go back and make sure that we correct it because the ones that we've already adopted say they could say the superintendent's.
So we can amend the motion to make that change, go to the board. And that can get us through the first reading and then make further adjustments the next time through and the second reading. We want to read through them again and make any further edits.
I would say if you want to amend it, if you want to just alter 3122, do yours from the Neola, find out, be consistent on all of the policies.
His recommendation is to have it at the superintendent's of the board. They can have to have all the, but that's up to the board as to whether or not you want it to come to as well. So that's completely up to the board. Neolas, he's talking from his experience. He was the superintendent for many years. And that's how he said that it had worked well for him. He was able to, you know, this is where it ends and didn't take any farther. But if the board would like to have that opportunity for all those appeals.
The parents really should be in our team. Maybe that's where someone I'm discussing the community is, to make sure that, you know, things are being communicated and that chain of command being realized through its map. And I do feel, as Amanda said, that we're at that next level. And then it's public and it's, you know, with many people discussing, and yeah, I support it for sure.
So we'll have to bring, we'll have to go through and find policies that we've adopted that need to be re-graduated or amended.
So am I just gonna approve the first reading, am I just calling out 3122 or 22, or just the whole section again?
You can leave it in there with that amendment, that won't change the other ones, we'll just have to get those other ones changed as well.
So I'm just gonna amend, approve, amend my improvement of the first reading of Neola Policy 3100 through 3531, with potential to 3122, as of this stuff.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think we just, if we're gonna cat the board to all of these, we have to make sure that if those hearings come and we're gonna have their time and the strength to respond to them by us, so we need to make sure that your priorities and that your central influence and the first time, so we can have majority there.
Yeah, I think you called out 20 days.
Yeah. Well, we can all make that consistent on our part too, right? It's just Neola's suggestion, so yes, that's a good point, but.
Yes, they would all read the same, I don't think that any of that language is up there.
Yeah, I believe they all read 20 days.
I guess I would like to consult with them too, to see if we can adjust that, Alex will pick it up a hundred years as well.
Well, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, adjust it out to 30 days or something like that, so he can pick it up.
And 30 would be like our worst case, maybe 1,000.
20 business days would be a full month, so it would mean that we'd never have to meet outside of a regular board meeting as long as we were with that 20 working day. And it doesn't count the weekend.
Right, we have a groupie board because of the holidays.
It would be very rare.
So, but yes.
Okay, that's good. All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Florkas, supported by Mr. Cook, to approve the first reading of Neola Policies 3100 through 3531, professional staff with the amendment to 3122. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we have the RISA Biennial Board of Education Resolution.
I'll be the alternate.
All right, so I'll move.
I'll make a motion, put Marty down as the alternate?
No, it's just the solid one. Read it.
I'll make a motion to approve Karen as the alternate. Karen is a designated representative and Marty is the alter representative who served as a 2019 Electoral Body, elect members of St. Clair County RISA Board of Education, Board of Supervisors representatives, sport candidate Michael P. McMartin, and Marshall J. Campbell for a position in St. Clair County Regional Educational Service Agency Board of Education for a term of six years.
Support.
The motion by Mr. Perry, supported by Ms. Florkas. Any discussion? For picking that on. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Both candidates have been on the board for several terms now.
One's the president, one's the vice president.
They do really nice jobs, so. And I don't think, I think those are the two that are running.
Yeah.
Resolution in support of the adequately funding Michigan schools.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution in support of the adequately funding Michigan schools.
Support. Motion by Mrs. O'Connor, supported by Mrs. McHugh. Any further discussion?
This was a resolution that the MESA has passed out of that the districts adopted to kind of show the support for the funding caucus that they've been going on. Some districts are adopting this resolution. Really, they're just trying to show that everybody's on the same page, and we agree with the findings from the faculty caucus, and we know that different students cost different amount of dollars to be educated, so they're just showing support of that.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The AFSCME contract ratification.
I'll make a motion to approve the ASCME contract for 2019, 2020, and 2020, 21 school years presented.
Support. Motion by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mrs. O'Connor. Any further discussion?
This is for the transportation department, our bus drivers. We've met with them, actually, we only had to meet with them once, we had a good conversation. They provided me some very good information with some parallels around the area. We know that these ladies work very hard for us and we want to keep them, do what we can for them. Very, very fair contract, it's over a two-year period, so it would be nice to have this done, and they will take a touch for them tomorrow.
Further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have the administrative contracts, Mr. Corby, Mr. Corby, who's joking, Mrs. Pavlov.
So I wanted to put these on there, just as a discussion, we, the last meeting we decided, or the last finance committee meeting, we started discussing the contracts a little bit and moving forward. Obviously, we were ahead of only on day four. We're working on that budget for next year, so it's hard to settle. We do know that what we have done for our other units, you know, the teachers who are giving us stuff in February, and they'll be getting an increase on their salary in July. We settled the contract with the SEIU, which is our kitchen, second tutorial, where there is an increase. And we just approved the contract with transportation department where there's an increase. So I have put together some different increases, a 2% kind of for everybody, would cost the district nearly $10,000 for a one year. And then if we went to a 5%, which are some of the contracts that we've approved, it's about $20,000. So as Adam and I are able to put those numbers out there and make sure that we have, because we were trying to do that three to five year plan, so we know we're looking, we know that we have a huge class in these freshmen, I think it's 80 students that freshman, so when we have that class graduate, you're gonna have that big number drop because of most of our kindergarteners, class size has been about 60 to 65. So, you know, we're taking on that big head, so we're making sure that we're being physically responsible before we do that. But I did want to bring it to everybody to kind of just have that discussion started. I have not with several, many people listed there. Our current principals are on the, they'll be going on their third year of a three-year, but they have 2% built into each of those years. So when we're looking at administrative, that's what we've had. The people on the list, there is no increases last year for all the two years ago, I believe was the last time it was raised, so we administrative side of that. So what it's gonna come down to is we'll have to sit and have another discussion with the finance committee, we'll have to set up that meeting for the next couple of weeks to make sure that our numbers all look well. I wish I had more information. The forecast that I had done prior to Adam coming, it looks very good. Make sure, look it over, have that second set of eyes.
And all the contracts that are coming up, everybody's obviously interested in returning?
Yes. Yes. There is one that we will talk about a little bit further, to be interested in increasing.
When are these open?
June 30th. Most of our contracts we do are one year. It would be nice to do more, we've done that obviously with the current principals. I would be considering that for the other groups, or the other individuals listed as well. It is nice to have, it gives them some security and helps too.
So are you looking to do three-year contracts? What you're offering for the principals do?
The principals right now are on the, will be on the third, we could look at doing an extension, which is something I'll bring also, so instead of only having one year left, we bump it up and they have three again. It's, again, it's a nice security for them, it shows that, you know, what they're doing is making us happy. And again, as we go down there, it's gonna be the same conversation, central office contracts are the same way. We're looking at it to make sure it fits. Actually, H and I were the numbers that ranged together, so that's where we're at, $10,000 for 2%, and 20 for a five. So those both grouped in together. And then lastly, the J, the hourly contracts. I have not met with those groups, but again, it's somebody that works very hard, they make a very low hourly rate. It's not a, you know, if we give a 2% or 5%, it's not a huge financial burden to us, so that's something that we're looking at, but I do not have those numbers for us right now.
So just so I'm clear, the folks listed under H and I, nine people, those are all up this year?
Every year.
Every year.
Every year.
Every year.
Correct. All of them have the same language, and they're saying that the automatic renewal, and, you know, everybody on there is doing what they're expected, is effective prior to effective, so there isn't anybody we're looking to replace at this time. So they would automatically get that, but it would just stay status quo, so we're looking to.
And so our next meeting, our next board meeting is the 24th of June, which would come in ahead of that, June 30th date, so the finance committee, we can meet in advance of that within the next couple of weeks?
I was hoping that Adam and I could work through some stuff this week, if possible do a bit next week.
Okay.
Because that would give us a lot of time to sit down and give it as well.
And Brad, all the H and I people did not get raises last year?
There was two central office that received increases last year, I believe it was a 1%. So three, it was 1%, and three, maybe that central office received that.
And you're gonna look at the impact for the three-year budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, during that finance committee, I think that's when we kind of realized that that's gonna be a big swing, that that one. I have, Adam and I talked to, we were trying to brainstorm some different ideas, you know, any way I can save the district some money and also help our employees. So we started looking at annuities, what if the district would get out of paying 35% towards their retirement on that, but it is still considered part of their salary, so we'd have to pay, you do save on, like that, that could, like, so there's about 7%, we would save like over the annuity instead of giving the salary raise. So it's something we're also looking at. It's not a huge, it's not a huge savings, but it is some savings, so again, that might be something we approach and people will come back.
Great, can you give comps on some of the different positions? It's hard to figure, I don't know the going rate on each, each one of these positions to find out if we're in line or out of line.
Sure.
For same school, school size, similar position, I know we wear more hats and some older.
Yeah. The last time you had that spreadsheet, I think we updated it a couple of years ago.
Yep, two years ago I had this.
It's easy to say 2%, but I don't know if they're underpaid right now, or on the high side.
We are underpaid. I can be honest, a principal salary for secretary of principals should be anywhere between 90 and 100. Right now, we're at 77, approximately, 76.5. For the assistant principal, usually about that 65 to 70 range, we're at 55. Tech director, we have, Phil Buss Ryan here, this, we have a steel, they are upwards of 80, 90, depending on where they're at. A lot of districts end up having to pay recents for the support that they get, so way under. The ladies at central office, there is nobody I can find as comparable to them for everything that they do. Our instructional, I can get those, I don't know where those are at, but 10, 50, $1 an hour, so it's pretty low. As far as mine, I'm lowest paid in the newer area. The next closest one is Brown City, he's in his first year, he's ended his second year, he's had 104, 103. The next closest one for our size is about 118, so I do believe we're under, but I believe it's.
We have it on the table.
Sure.
And are, do most of these people, you know, hold doubt?
When we did this last time, the, there are some weird ones in our county. Alvin Eck has transportation and, I think, technology, or he's grounds and technology. APAD is, it's a common one in the area, there are some that are different, but I don't know whatever it happens.
Well, at least if it's what they're doing.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We are very fortunate with the staff we have in every position, everybody on that list there is worth every penny we pay.
Any further discussion? Hey, superintendent comments?
Just a few things for you. Third grade retention, so next year is when our third graders and M-step scores. Yes, this year's second grade, so next year, the M-step scores, they'll do a cutoff score in any number, but right now they set the number, I think it's 1252. So we looked at our preliminary data, so we have some scores back from this year, and if we use that 1252 at third grade, we have zero kids that would be retained, which is outstanding. The second tier, 1253 to 1271, I think we had five students in, and the rest are all above that. So our scores right now, and again, the preliminary scores, that would show that we would not have to retain any students. Yes. So that, again, is the state law that's saying if you're below this number, you should retain, there are some options for parents to do certain things so they don't have to still retain. Everybody's very nervous what it's gonna look like and what it's gonna do to third grade and schools, so it was very, very good to see those numbers right now, that we would not have any issues, so our teachers are doing a great job. Cret has been reaching out, we're trying to get three different proposals for, to follow our policy for leasing. We reached out to Holland again, and that's who we currently lease our buses, or they have the Hoover buses. And they came in at like the 14,000 and 15,000, we sent gas and diesel. Then we actually contacted, got ahold of somebody from Midwest, and they deal with the internationals, and they were about $1,000 less per month for, or I'm sorry, per year for those leases. And he's got one other kind, yeah, per month would be awesome. It's like 50 bucks for a bus. So we have one more, but we hope to sign a contract or lease contract by the end of this week, that way we're having those buses delivered in time. The extension for the three bu, or the two buses, we have to do a three-month extension for them next March, which will work out good, it comes out to about 1250 per bus per month, which is great in the ballpark, it's a little higher than we're paying now, but to do that extension is great.
And we're leasing how many?
So we're leasing four new ones currently, and the two that we have will be one more year, and then from there. And then from there, the buyouts are about fifty thousand dollars for the gas bus at the end of that date. So it's a nice option, we know where they've been, it's three years in, it's something to consider. We do have one more year to talk about it and make that. Well, and that's another thing we tend, actually, we can do. Well, and that's why they're saying right now that this is where they're guessing it at. So until they can take a look at it. Yeah, they might see it and say, well.
Where do we end up with the Volkswagen bus grant?
So if we apply, you have to make a purchase within the next year. You have until twenty, end of 2020 to make that purchase. So when I talked to Brown City, I told them that we can now make that commitment and that we were not going to join that consolidation with them just because we didn't, the finance didn't have that confidence that we'd be able to purchase a bus. I sat through, well, I tried to sit through a webinar the other day. I just caught, and just the first part of it, and then the sound was cutting in and out. But the webinar was on the end of the school year. So the governor has signed it, the law, it's in place. The MDE has came out and said that anybody that applied for the three additional waivers, the three additional days of waiver back in February, that they would automatically grant it for more for the state of emergency. So they're saying it's out there and that they will let us know if we are one of those schools ASAP. I'm very confident, we applied for the waiver, we received the waiver, the original waiver. We fit the criteria for the state emergency days, we did cancel those days. So we will be granted three more days. Have not received official notice, so I have not put out official notice yet. It is changed, I know that we have talked about it, administration, and we've talked about it with our staff. Until I get it from the state, I can't put it out to the community. I want to, and I know everybody else is waiting to hear. I'm telling everybody that thirteen could probably be our last day, I'm very confident it will. But officially, I have not received notice from the MDE. It's going to be here this week, that's what they said at the webinar. So this is just a handout. When we talked at our finance committee, and actually, when we talked with Dave and I, and with Amanda, this was just a break. So when you guys see our financials each year or each month, you see a function code and, you know, basic program added needs, this gives you a little breakdown of what sits underneath those categories. It's something that we should add to our binders. I think it's something nice to have in those binders, so I just wanted to give that out to everybody. Summer tax, so I have attended four township meetings. Well, a city meeting and three of our township meetings. These groups have all agreed to collect summer tax for us and continue doing that instead of going to winter and back to summer. So six of our seven municipalities will continue to do the summer tax for us this year. It's great for our taxpayers, it's great for everybody involved. It keeps that easy transition, we don't have a lot of headaches with escrow and making that. Wales, I have been in contact with, they're the last ones to make that decision. Sharing all the information from each of the townships that have approved it already. I have, I'm optimistic that they'll pass it and that everybody will be on the same boat. But I just want to keep everybody updated that we are.
When is that?
June.
Well, so they only have.
They have the May one, I did not, I did not attend, but I've been in contact with Liz Masters and Treasure. So we've talked about.
Have there been any concerns? They proved it, but what are the concerns?
The, so Richmond Township was the one that was very hesitant on it. I think everybody is just concerned because the way the resolution is written, it's very confusing. So the legality of us doing summer taxes, it states in our resolution that this will continue until revoked. So we passed that resolution and that summer tax collection legally is able to take place until we revolve it. We have not revolved it. The second part in the resolution says that the board will agree to adopt a resolution each year to go in an agreement with each municipality. Because when they do a summer tax collection, they can actually bill us per parcel. So they could, so what it does is that second part says, okay, now I'm going to notify you before January 1st that we would like to get an agreement with you to collect summer taxes. So as we had that conversation, when we looked into it and it was Jamie, I can't think of his last name now. He's the assessor for Memphis. He was the one that really called me and went out with Paul Bidia from the MISD. Who's a rule ruler tax and said, listen, as long as you come to an agreement with each township, you can still do a summer tax. So I called Trune on the phone with Jamie. We talked to Mike at Trune and we went through everything. So listen, here's what we're looking to do, is this good. Yes, as long as both parties agree, we have that agreement, we can continue. So the first time I called Trune and went through this, I talked to Joe Souls and he said no. But as we started going into it, we got more information. So that's just everybody, it's new to everybody, but they want to make sure that there's no issues.
When I went to that meeting, and I understand this right, that since Riley, Richmond, Memphis, they all proved it. So whoever lives in that, there's, is going to go back to the summer. If Wales doesn't, then they're going once we'll be affected, right?
That's correct.
So it doesn't have to be, everybody has to be agreed.
It does not. It's just whatever township or city that you live in, if they agree, that's the rule. So that's where we're weighing in Wales. Obviously, Wales is our biggest, they have the most residents for Memphisville schools. But we have been in contact with, sharing a bunch of information, so I'm optimistic that they'll also agree. I just sent a letter around. I know the last meeting, I talked about the PSI proposal. I talked with Performance Services to make sure that they were in agreement with it. And they are very open with the conversation. Like I said, if at any point that either party felt as though it was not working, it can be immediately terminated. So if the same thing, if the board felt as though this was impacting my job as superintendent here, we can immediately terminate that if it agrees to give me an opportunity to take that on.
Brad, one question that I thought of after we talked about a little bit, is we use them for services.
Correct.
So if you do some consulting with them, are we able to use them again for services?
We would, but I would have to be out of the picture then. Or we, I would terminate my position with them.
And then there's a time frame that we would have to.
No.
You disassociate with them the sixteen ninety days.
No. Because I make no decisions is where it's pretty easy. Obviously, I make recommendations to the board, the board makes its decision, so that's where that's at.
Is the position education consultant?
Yes, it is.
And is it a commission base?
It's a salary base.
There's no commission?
Not that I've been aware, made aware of, no. No, but it goes through December 1st and it's a salary.
So I have a couple of concerns. One, I know we spent one point two million dollars of thinking fund money with this company. I'm just a little concerned about a company that we spent that much money hiring the person that's running our, that's the head administrator of the school. There's a, what I would consider an implied conflict of interest there, whether it is or not. The mere, in my mind, the mere appearance of or potential of a conflict of interest is in itself a conflict of interest. And, you know, frankly speaking, we talked last meeting that this would be nights and weekends. And I struggle a little bit with understanding how that, how a construction company and other schools are going to be doing business on a night and a weekend. And honestly, since our last meeting, I've been to every baseball game, every softball game, and not seeing you there. I know that was a conversation last year about attending events. And frankly, I can't support this. I think you need to be here with our school.
The optics don't look good. And although we've done making the payment to the one point two million, they still always, it's still a warranty of the service on that which is provided.
Correct.
If we had an issue with the border that we put in or any problems with installation base.
That would fall back on the company and they hired for that.
But yes, I, yes. The fact is, you brought it, you brought it to us in a good face, saying, hey, here's what it is. I don't think there is any conflict, but the optics don't go wrong. And I do concur, there are activities outside of school. When the time constraint hits, which ones you pick?
Well, it is, it's an eight-hour-per-week contract. So that's not, I don't think, a huge impact on what I do. Twenty-four-seven, I think I've proven that. You may have not seen it, but baseball, softball lately, I travel robotics, I travel every state tournament event that I can. I think that I'm very visible to our community at our events.
Yeah, I understand you wanting to supplement your income, you know, but if there was anything else, I think we could consider it. Or I could consider it, but, you know, it went from Marty and Chris on this as well. But if you want us to vote on it, you can make a motion. We will call vote. And just to remind everybody, just because you make a motion doesn't mean you support. It's just to get it out there for discussion and vote.
I'll make the motion to approve giving Brad consent to serve as educational consultant with Performance Services as presented.
Motion by Mrs. Florka, supported by Mr. Paray. Do a roll call vote.
Mr. Ryan?
No.
Mr. Paray?
No.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Mrs. Florka?
No.
Mrs. O'Connor?
No.
Mrs. Bobsey?
No.
Mr. Dersberg and I have been working on a new link on our webpage. A Memphis, or a Community and Parent Concern page. So under our district, there's the Parent Concern link. And we'll obviously update it as we update our policies in here, but it's just a page where our community and our parents can go and find some of the information in our chain of command. We have the organizational chart on there that we've talked about at our last board workshop. Our anti-bolusing, our complaint, bullying policy, our complaint form, and then the formal complaint policy also. So just some nice information that we're going to have on there that we talked about making more available for everybody. So I just want to share that with you guys. I believe that is all I have for.
When we approved the policy thirty-one, twenty-two, or if they down the policy twelve hundred or anything like that, and there's going to be, no, the forms for them to formally fill out?
No, I think it's a form. There'll be a form.
There will be a form of the thirty-one, twenty-two, okay.
Yeah.
Board roundtable. I'll start. I was at a, I had a school board association meeting where we discussed the, I presented a school board scholarship for six hundred dollars. And it's usually to someone who's going into education. Well, as we've been looking at our finances, which haven't been as good, because the income isn't there that used to be there. And, you know, and the schools do give six hundred, I mean, they actually give six hundred dollars, but we have less schools giving than we give out, because we give out to nine high schools. And it's just always worked that way. We have two high schools in Port Huron and the two high schools in the East China District that we've been giving out to and stuff. And so we're now looking at, and then two, it's very hard to get, there's not that many kids that are going into education. Unfortunately, there was, I think it was last year, Port Huron School, High School had nobody apply for the scholarship because there was nobody going into education. And so we've been discussing this at the meeting. And what we've kind of come up with is we're probably going to raise the amount and lower the, so it will be three scholarships for fifteen hundred dollars and rather than nine scholarships for six hundred. And so that's lowering the amount a little bit and of what, you know, our income versus our expenses. But it'll be countywide and then we're broadening it. And we're encouraging actually, because there's, with the tech program and that, they're really encouraging them to go on to get some schooling after they, you know, after they get through tech, you know, to go on and to pick up some college and that. And so we're going to be encouraging not only the tech kids, but it'll just be a lot broader. So there'll be, you know, it's open to a lot more kids that can, that can sign up for this, that, you know, can fill out the requirements. It's not going to be just education, going into education, because it's just not working anymore, unfortunately. It's, we're in that down part, you know, where, you know, then it'll someday go back up to where there's an influx of people wanting to be teachers, but that's not right now. So, but that's how we're doing it. And so that's what it looks like we're going to be doing with those things. And so it's open, you know, I mean, our kids will be able to apply for that, but it will be only three kids awarded at countywide. So hopefully some of those kids will get, but we'll have to see, so. Yeah, yeah.
And I would just like to say hats off to Mary Buck. Her fabulous graduation. Yeah, you did a wonderful job, thanks for keeping us on track and making everything look great.
Band and choir were awesome as well. It was really, we really needed to be really facing, to actually get to see them perform. It just sounded awesome. Congratulations to our, all our graduates as well.
I just have one question, Brad. On the May 3rd Friday, we filed approximately two hundred and fifty-dollar fraud issue at Sam's. Have we got to the bottom of that yet?
No, I've been, I've been to the store twice now. So the cards they issued are supposed to have different numbers for each employee. And they don't, because they all have the same number. So I asked them to pull the video footage, and they did. And told me it was a clean-chavering older gentleman, or one of them, and one was a younger lady. They won't show me the video. I've met with all of our employees that have cards. Nobody has done this. They said it's very common that people get your account number and use your cash rewards. So that's what it is, is each year we get cash rewards for all the money we're spending there. This past year, I think it was two hundred and eighty dollars or something along those lines, two fifty. What, well, in four different purchases, somebody went in at two different stores, one in Port Huron and Roseville, and used their cash rewards and bought, I mean, we have copies of the receipts, it's a grocery list. So I'm still working with them. I ask them what we can do in the future, so I know who's using the card. So right now, we've collected all the cards, we're holding them all at central office. So anybody that needs to go to Sam's, comes for me, we order it and set it up, we take care of it all that way. They don't know that they can fix it. And I said, well, we're going to have to change the way we're doing things. And she recommended that once the cash is, rewards put on, you can, you can take that out, deposit it in their own checking if we wanted to. So we're looking at different options, but no, we have not.
They can't do the distinguishing numbers that we saw?
She did not think that they can do that. It's supposed to be that way. Each card has an individual name on it, but the numbers. They don't do the picture anymore, no. And no, they don't even check the cards anymore.
You're right, they don't.
They used to check when you walk in and they, they just, they don't. So that's the other part of it, is that she said usually that fraud would be very good and give you the cash rewards, but because the fraud happened at our own, own store, she wasn't sure if they were going to.
How many cards do we have on there?
Nine. Yeah, so Sandy bought it just kind of by chance, because we typically use that money for Teacher Appreciation Week, Teacher Appreciation Week to buy lunch, to cheer the troops, so.
I'm about a quarter of the way through an online training for MASV. So once I go and have a, if I have an online contact from the agenda or the, what do you want to call it? It looks like something that maybe everyone should take, because it's around, one of the businesses of school board service. In setting that vision and all that stuff to talk about, that we don't need to get to. I'll report that. I'll record that. Yeah. Is that mine? Yeah, their schedule is for, yeah, personal meetings, I'm very good at it myself.
The M I S B, or the M I S A will come up and do our training, it's $3.50 personally, that's guaranteed five people. So I did reach out to KPEC and Yale. Yale has two new numbers, but they believe they're changing to the M I S B evaluation tool. KPEC, I'm just not sure if they're doing that. So we can get them to come on here for the three board members that need the training for super credit evaluation, but it would cost us for five. So that's still an option if we want to set up, because I have to let them know, because like you said, finding one with them is very difficult. I don't believe they offer that online. The M I S B tool, where they log online, the M I S A, the school dance one that we use, they are currently not, I know they're working towards it. They are.
Well, for Amanda's, sorry, for Amanda's consumption, the David Ryan spoof continues. I don't know if you guys are getting them, but I continue to get emails from you that aren't there.
Oh yeah. I like when they start, hey, Florka.
Are you available today and then tomorrow? I'm thinking about emailing.
Chad is so happy to.
I didn't get any yet. I got a piece from myself, but I got a lot from Chad. I haven't gotten any lately.
I just got one last one for this one.
Anything else for a roundtable? I guess on the superintendent evaluation training, so are you exhausted seeing if we can get any other local schools?
I've reached out to all county schools, we'll do that, and to the F D numbers that are using the tool.
Okay.
I have not extended out, so I don't know where it's coming, I don't know if they have it at any time.
So you, you had mentioned before that we could participate in the discussion, but could not necessarily vote in the evaluation.
This is in December. So we have to do it the summer in the training. Do you guys have a preference for, do you want to do it after the summer, or quickly here, or during the summer? Do it for a band camp? What all the kind I want to do.
It's, yeah, it's a three-hour week, set it up whenever. They're flexible to come here. I did ask Reese to, if they had any talk to postman, and they do not.
So we'll do another quarterly review next month?
Tomorrow.
In July? So it'd be good if we can get it done before, before then, I guess.
I'm about to be grinding maybe.
She, and that's the company I don't think she's with, but.
Yeah, you have to be trained at, at least once, and then they rolled it out, we all had one time, so.
Don't you feel expedited?
No, I don't, so it's kind of like, you know.
Again, it's a course again. Most we don't sell the other two.
I'm sure you're welcome.
It should all be a big.
Okay. Anybody have anything for closed session?
Great. I'll move to adjourn the meeting at 9:04. All those in favor, say aye. Close.